All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Nisswa Planning Commission Board of Adjustment for Tuesday, August second, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. Roll call, please. Jesse's on.
Gary Harris.
Josh Young.
Avery's.
Maggie Wettler.
Bethany Satterland.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Being that I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next to approve the meeting minutes for July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item is an open forum. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak towards uh something not on the agenda this evening? Uh, moving on to public hearings. Now we're gonna be opening the public hearing. Yes, okay. Uh, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Uh, first item is a conditional use permit application zero one seven dash two-two. Upon further review, the addition of pickleball courts was deemed to meet the definition of an accessory use for the existing business as listed on table twenty zero uh twenty dash four five of chapter twenty of the Nisswa Code of Ordinances. Allowed on the H B district with a land use permit, the subject property is located at two three nine eight two Hazelwood Drive, P I D two eight two three zero five four four. Owner, Brainerd Baxter Corp., applicant Don McFarland, and that has been withdrawn.
Correct.
All right, being that was our only public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. Final plat application zero one eight dash two-two to subdivide a twenty-six point five acre parcel into six single-family lots within the Shoreland Residential Zoning District. The subject property is located off of Upper Roy Lake Road, P I D two eight one zero zero six six zero between Roy and Ray Lakes, where applicant Jess Thro Carpenter Team Investments. Bethany.
The applicant is requesting approval of the preliminary plat application for Roy's Landing. The proposed development consists of six single-family residential building sites. Based on the recommendation of the city attorney and to allow for more feedback and response time to answer proposed questions, city staff is recommending that we table Roy's Landing. An agreement to the extension of time limits under Minnesota statutes and Minnesota um two Minnesota statutes was received by city staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What was the uh if we table this, what is the timeline?
Uh, the timeline, he did um the applicant signed the time extension, um so that starts the clock once again, and we would have sixty days.
Okay, sixty days. Do we have any questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that uh we table final plat application zero eighteen dash two-two until September. Correct?
September sixth.
September.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. The next item is final plat application zero one nine dash two-two to subdivide a ten point nine acre parcel into nine single-family lots within the Shoreland Residential Zoning District. Subject property is located off of Lower Cullen Road, P I D two eight zero two zero six zero three, owner applicant Sandy Smith, Next Shift Enterprises. And Kevin, you're representing them as well. Bethany, your staff report.
The applicant requests that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the final plat application for Quarter Mile Depot to the City Council. The proposed development consists of nine single-family residential building sites. The City Council approved the pr- and Mary Plat of Quarter Mile Depot on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The subject property is located at P I D two eight zero two zero six zero three and is ten point six acres. The property is Zoned Shoreland Residential. Please note that condition four has been changed based on the recommendation of the city attorney that dedicating the Paul Benian Trail to the public should be omitted. The state of Minnesota owns the trail.
Are we just eliminating item four then? What uh what's what's the deal with the findings of fact?
I apologize, I'm looking for it right now.
Okay.
Okay, so condition number four will read Lower Cullen Road to be dedicated to the public, and the portion that reads and the Paul Benian Trail will be stripped.
Did you have any comments? Have any additional questions, comments? No?
No, I guess uh all the Ts were crossed and the Is are dotted, it appears on this one, so. I don't have anything that in particular, no.
John? David?
Our comments are included in the packet, so those have been addressed.
I will entertain a motion.
I would uh I move to recommend approval of the final plat of uh application zero nineteen dash two-two to subdivide the ten acre, ten point nine acre parcel into nine single-family lots uh off of Cullen Road and with the owner applicant Sandy Smith, Next Shift Enterprises. All according to the findings of fact as uh presented by the staff and uh the conditions of approval. Minus number four.
Amended.
Amended, amended.
I will I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Yep, good luck on the project. Uh, next item is ordinance review and recommendations with uh Chris Pence.
Thank you, Chair, Planning Commission. In response to the City Council's motion to authorize and direct staff to conduct an examination of the current code of city ordinances, at the end of May and beginning of June, we contracted with Chris Pence to review and provide analysis of our city's shoreline zoning ordinance. Chris Pence is a board conservationist with the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources, the former planning and zoning administrator for both Crow Wing County and the city of Cross Lake. He is a past president of the Minnesota Association of Planning and Zoning Administrators. He's an M P C A septic certified professional and is current member of both the Minnesota Septic System Advisory Committee and the Minnesota Septic System Implementation and Enforcement Task Force. He has held roles as a zoning technician, environmental resource specialist, and an onsite systems manager. He has detailed experience in ordinance writing, review, and revisions, along with extensive knowledge of state statutes, shoreline rules, the Wetland Conservation Act, and L G U process.
Quite the resume, yeah.
That might help. Now you can probably actually hear me. All right. Um, I just really, really wanna be clear that um I am here as a as this as a consultant. I'm not here with my current position with the state as with the Board of Water and Soil Resources, so that's I'm I'm not um representing them any uh shape, manner, or form as I've as I've done this analysis. So I uh was uh Bethany and Jenny talked to me at one point about if I'd be interested in um just taking analysis, looking at the ordinance and and what um you know, what is it, how it currently looks, you know, are there some potential ways to maybe improve it, and then I think there are some potential um discussions that need to be centered around making sure that there's appropriate standards for boardwalks and uh and and that sort of thing, so um what I have done through through my process is um read through the ordinance a bunch of times, trying to get a feel for a little bit, trying to understand, you know, um what the rules are and and uh what the regulatory requirements are, and then the state has the Minnesota Rules, Chapter sixty-one twenty, which is a state shoreline rules, and so um all cities and counties that um have shoreline in their jurisdiction are required to at least meet the minimums of that rule. And so part of what I've done with my review is just to um make sure that there are that the minimums are met and uh and that there are also ways, I believe, to um enhance the ordinance, which will, I believe, make it easier for um staff to administer, easier for your contractors and citizens to understand what the rules are, and I think also make it easier for the commission and the city council to really have a um a clear understanding of of what the expectations are and what's what the rules are as far as activities within the shoreline area uh within the city. Uh, one thing I wanna be clear about is that um this analysis that I'm working on now has uh um isn't considering things like subdivision standards or septic systems, P U D, W A C A, those sorts of things. Right now, uh I've been tasked with just analyzing the shoreline residential part of the ordinance and um and uh doing the analysis for that. Um, I'll just give you a couple notes of of what I've um kind of what I've found so far with the ordinance. And then um what I'm hoping to hear from you guys is is what your thoughts are of the current ordinance, and if there's any things that um you know are really going well, that you that you would uh wanna make sure that we keep going, or you know, need more clarification. And then if there are any issues, things that you see that are problematic or need to need more clarification or um need to be uh changed or added so that it's more understandable. The idea behind a shore ordinance, any ordinance, is that it should be readable. It should be such that the citizenry contractors, um everybody should be able to grab it, read it, and have a basic understanding of what the expectations are. Uh, the current ordinance as it sits right now has most of the components that you'd need to have in a shoreline ordinance uh to be compliant with Minnesota Rule sixty-one twenty. There are some changes, though, that I think need to be made to uh so we meet that minimum rule and for clarification. Uh, right now, uh as I've read through the ordinance, um it's 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 ambiguous. It's not it's not clear. Um, it's not laid out in a format that I would think would be intuitive. If I was trying to find certain things, um I I struggle to find that. There's situations in the ordinance where it'll say do one thing here, and it'll say do another thing in another spot. Seems to be multiple standards for the same thing in different parts of the ordinance, so it's hard to know which standard applies, particularly to things like stormwater management plans, uh vegetation along the shoreline as far as when that's required to to have those buffers in place and uh based on the different um permits that would be required. Um, my understanding is that the city recently went through the codification process with the ordinance, and I think that could be just one of the issues I've, when I was with the county, um I worked up in the city of Cross Lake. Um, and I rewrote their orders back in twenty thirteen, and they had just gone to the codification process also. And it took, I think, an ordinance, and they just kind of reorganize it, and according after talking with staff, it seems like some things might have come back from the codification that were different from when it went into the into the process. So I think that might be um one of this, one, you know, just one of the issues, you know, that I'm seeing right now is then that could have been probably one of the issues that caused that. Um, as I look at the ordinance now, I I really struggle trying to understand where permits are required for certain activities and and what types of activities need permits and uh and those sorts of things. To be honest, when you have an ordinance that really is is not as clear as it should be, it puts a lot of pressure on your staff because then they are having to um make interpretations of what the ordinance means and and uh and then you've got your contractors, developers, who are relying on that interpretation as they begin to work on their project and get the plans that they need to do and all the money they need to invest, and then a situation might happen where that staff person might move on to a different position or might leave the city for whatever reason, and then another person comes in and might interpret that differently, and then you've got, so it really um it it provides what you really wanna shoot for in these ordinances is clarity. Um, you want it so that the um your staff can administer it fairly and across the board, and you also wanna make sure that those who are working in it, your contractors, developers, and your citizenry um have a regulatory certainty. They they can kind, they can know that this this is, these are the rules I have to follow, and if I follow these steps, then I'll be able to achieve what it is that I'm looking to do. Um, so some of the things that I've noticed that I think might be helpful um for clarification would be, as I mentioned before, um standards for boardwalks, uh pools, you know, patio patio locations and size, uh things like um do you allow um like a retaining wall in the shoreline area or not? Uh, looks like there's some dirt moving standards are unclear as to what needs a permit. What do I do if I have an ice ridge on my property, like a an annual ice ridge that maybe got pushed up in one bad year, if it's historical or you know, a number of years, what's what are the expectations and rules related to that? Um, so that's kind of one of the things that I think um really just needs some clarification, and I and um I don't think it'd be very difficult to put the standards in um that would make sense for this uh you know, for the city. Um, to be honest, you know, when I was working at Crow Wing County, we put together that ordinance, um seems to be working pretty well for them. And uh my goal would be to use that same um format, not actually, things wouldn't be exactly cookie cutter the same. But I do think it's important that um you try to be as consistent as possible amongst multiple jurisdictions, particularly when you share lakes. Cause it's kind of confusing for a lake owner to say, over on this side of the lake, I can build a shed this size, this location, but if I'm on this side of the lake, different jurisdiction I can't. And what makes it difficult, in addition to that, is when your contractors or your developers, when they walk into the city, they go, oh, yeah. They gotta think, what is this one I'll do, and then, oh, now I'm back in the county where consistency is key, and if we can, if I, and I, that's something that I would really st- encourage you to strive for. Um, would be trying to be as consistent as possible, yet maintaining what this, when we made the ordinance changes up in Cross Lake, it was fairly consistent, but with changes that the city wanted. And they were adequate, they were appropriate and needed because of the different situation the city had versus being in a larger, you know, county situation, so definitely not um not saying it has to just be a cookie cutter approach, but I think the format and the layout makes sense, and I think that would be um what I what I would recommend that you do. Uh, there are some definitions in the ordinance that need to be worked on. I've, that's one of my parking lot items I'm calling or things that might need to look down the road. Um, I looked at the use table that um explains what uses are allowed in the districts, and I'd say about ninety percent of those don't have a definition in the ordinance, and it seems silly that you'd have to put a definition for a restaurant. But um when you find people who wanna come in and then and have the money to hire attorneys and like to fight those things out, you really wanna be clear as to what does a restaurant mean to the city of Nisswa and those sorts. So so there might be some questions. Well, we all know what that means. You know, the ordinance itself is a legal document, and it's binding, and it has penalties, and uh and so it's it it can't be treated as a as a as a policy document or a recommendation document. It's 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 gotta have very strict um and clear rules as to what are the expectations needed for that. So there are some definitions that I've included, that'll include my report that I think need to be looked at currently. But I think it's a whole nother process to look at the ordinance section in general, or the the definition section of the ordinance, cause there's a lot of as I made my list, I just kept writing down word or, you know, that just these, this needs to be looked at, and this needs to be looked at, and this doesn't apply anymore. We don't use the word hardship anymore, right? We use practical difficulty. We still have that hardship term in the in the ordinance, and so we need to pull that out, and cause that no longer applies to variances. So that's kind of what I've, you know, what I've come up with and what I've seen. So it's not, tonight's intention is not for me to sit and talk to you. Tonight's intention is for you to talk to me and let me know how things are going, if you have any feedback. Um, good, bad, or ugly, I'm 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 here to take it all in. And uh and then I'm incorporating this report, which I plan to have uh submitted to Bethany within a week or two. And then you guys will be able to take a full look at that, and and then, you know, the way that I'm putting it together is such that it's almost like an à la carte. I'm, you know, I've got a purpose and you know, the reason and, you know, my observations, and I've got a list of recommendations. And you can look down that list and see, like that one, like that one, no, don't worry about that one, like that, you know, take what you like. Um, add, if I miss some that you like added, feel free, strike what you don't like, amend, and then at the end of the day, you would then have a, in my mind, you have a roadmap. You know where you're going forward. We're all on the same page. And then when you decide to go forth, if you do with that orange revision, it's really just following your checklist and getting it formatted in the right way. Um, so that's a more intuitive ordinance, and it's easier to follow and to read. So that's really what I'm trying to put together is more of a roadmap for the city to to take a look at as it decides where it wants to go, you know, in the future with this ordinance, so. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions you guys have, or if any comments or um thought that you might have, I'd be happy to hear them.
I might start by saying that I'm breathing a bit of a sigh of relief. I thought maybe because of my old age, I was the only one who was confused by some of these things. But uh I I I you, I think you've hit it right on the head, you know, this is logic. It was just, this thing should be logic. It should eliminate interpretation especially.
Correct.
You know, and I, that's the problems that we have with projects here is, you know, it gets to be a pounding on each other as to
Right.
who who looks at it one way and who looks at it another, so.
Right.
Your report that'll come back, or that you'll have in a week or two or three, whatever, uh is that gonna have a a draft of of a of the proposed ordinance, new ordinance?
It'll have a, it'll have as a format, kind of just a general layout.
So outline.
Just kind of the outline of what it would look like, but the, you know, the nuts and bolts
Yeah.
in it aren't there right now because it's, I don't, and we're not there yet, I think, trying to get more of the you know, I'm really working hard on trying to get that thirty thousand foot perspective and just trying to have more of a more of a scope where we're going, and then, you know, if the city chooses to go down that route, I'd be happy to, you know, assist with that as well. But then we'd be having meetings with with you guys again, with the council, with the citizens, contractors, trying to get, you know, we want it this to be transparent, open feedback um and try to make, you know, the best, you know, put the best document forward that we can that would serve, you know, the needs of the city.
What is um, what is the process? Like, he's he's, I'd just like to have a roadmap of what the process is, so he's gonna give us a list of recommendations. Can you kind of walk us through what the steps would be, and this isn't really directed towards you.
Mm-hmm. As far as once we get that document, that white paper, um that will just, like he said, give us a roadmap of where where we should put our attentions and kind of let us know exactly the framework is which we need for the ordinance. Um, then if we choose to start you know, doing the revisions and doing those changes, um Chris would have a better understanding of what that would entail than I would.
Okay, yeah. So the, like I said, the report will include some um some pretty specific recommendations for the ordinance itself that I've come up with that I think um the city should at least Okay, yeah, so the, like I said, the report will include some, um, some pretty specific recommendations for the ordinance itself that I've come up with that I think, um, the city should at least. Consider and, and that, um, some things are more general, some things are more asking questions, you know, this is, this is what we have, what do you want to do with this? This is what I think, but you know, the real question is what does the city want? You know, just to be very clear, um, I live in Mayorfield, so I'm south of here, you know, I don't live in the city, I don't have any, um. There's nothing here that would, I would. Be willing to fight over or, you know, fall my sword over, it's what you guys want is what's gonna be in the ordinance. And, uh, my job is to listen to what you guys have to say, listen to the, the council, to the staff, to citizenry and then put that on a piece of paper. So I'm not here as a, as a hired gun trying to force something through, this is gonna be what you guys, you know, want it to be.
With your experience across lake revising their ordinance. Did you have interactions with other cities such as we would perhaps with Lake Shore, East Gal Lake in pertaining to the entire Gal Lake chain?
At that point, um, I, we didn't because of the way that it was set up in Cross Lake, that was that they shared jurisdiction with the county. On the lake itself, so there weren't other jurors, I mean, so if you go a little bit north, it's, it's kind of interesting between Cross Lake and Fifty Lakes. Or, no, Manhattan Beach, there's a spot where there's a lot, there's lakes, there's lots on the north side of, uh, a big trout and. This part of the lot long to Manhattan Beach was outside, I'm just to the city, that was the only time where we actually had an overlapping with the city. So they, they, they didn't, uh, instruct me to go in that direction, they, they asked me to. Um, look at the county ordinance and try to make as many similarities as possible to mirror that.
Contrary to what our situation is with Galway essentially being cut in half.
Well, it's.
County lines.
Yeah, it's so interesting because, um, I'm gonna put on my hat from two thousand seven and eight, was anybody part of that Metropolitan Project? You may remember that? So the, I believe it was the, um. Foundation Little Falls, I can't think of. Initiative Foundation, that's who I, I guess is helped, but they, they got a grant from the federal government and they got everybody together around Gull. County, both Cass and Crowing, yeah, Nisswa, Lake Shore, he's gonna be in everybody and the plan was, we're gonna come up with an ordinance that's gonna apply to the whole. The whole thing and that was a process that was worked on in two thousand seven, uh, maybe middle of two thousand nine. Um, with some pretty distinct recommendations as far as, you know, what we should expect for stormwater management requirements and these sorts of things. And then, um, Carwin County went and started. Amending the ordinance based on some of those findings from the Metropolitan and we looked around and. There was nobody else with us, nobody else was really that interested at that point of proceeding with that, so there has been. Um, discussions and meetings and I'm sure that the city could probably find some files on that from back in oh seven, oh eight. Um, cause I was, oh seven, oh eight, I was with Crow, I was Cass King at the time and so when I started with. With Crowing and oh eight, we were just wrapping up that, that project, they called the Metropolitan Project. And was trying to, was trying to find similar, um. Adopt a similar ordinance with performance to Andrew on Gal Lake so that everybody had similar rules and requirements that lived on the lake.
I wasn't a part of that project, but, uh. In regards to that project, what was the feedback from all the other cities and the, and the two major counties?
Everybody seemed to be in favor of it when we're going through the process. Um, but it had some pretty substantial changes, things that would have made business a lot different than what was going on. You know, previously, and so I think when the time came to make the revisions, I think, um. Some just felt like it, it might not have been the right fit for what they're looking for in their city and in their county. You know, a lot of something that came out of the Metropolitan were, you know, consistent stormwater requirements for permits, um. You know, consistent vegetation requirements, making sure that, you know, um. What are we requiring for dirt moving permits and, and best management practices and, you know, some of those things and there were also discussion about uses and lot size and setback requirements and, you know, those sorts of things. Um, and so that was a, yeah, that was a, you know, it's funny you mentioned that, cause it's like my brain kind of. You know, it doesn't always work the way it used to, but I do remember that, that process, so. Um, I'd like to think that that still is a great idea and I think the more collaboration that you can do across, um, LG boundaries only makes sense.
I do too and to have something set a little bit more even defined than what it was in two thousand, you said two thousand seven, two thousand eight?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely something I'm gonna. Review, see if there's something that could be expanded on from that point, cause I think communication with not just major cities around there, but the counties are gonna be. Pretty imperative, otherwise we're gonna have one side of the lake having. Different set of codes in order.
Yep, I completely agree with that, so, you know, if, if the, you know, if the city chooses to kind of follow the general county guidelines, at least. Part of the lake would be consistent, you know, but then you'd have the cast side, which, um, you know, and they have fine regulations over there, they're just a little bit different, you know, they're not. Completing the same and, and that, so, um. It's, it's worth, uh, it's worth always having that discussion, trying to find whatever commonalities we can find with other government units, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, part of the reason why this, well, I'm, I'm sure it's been ongoing, but one of the contentious iss- issues has been boardwalks. Um, for, has been for the county too, which is why they put a moratorium on it. Um, did you have any specific recommendations written up yet for boardwalks and what, what do you?
Not specific recommend, I don't have it in the report what I'm, what I recommend, but I can tell you what I recommend, it's pretty, it's pretty simple. Um, your jurisdiction ends at the ordinary high water market lakes and so your boardwalk rules apply to that, so you would have, you would have the. Ability to, to, uh, allow a permit to build the boardwalk to that point, anything beyond that then becomes a DNR permit for dockage and that sort of a thing. Um. From the Wetland Conservation Act, uh, the, uh. The, the best practice for accessing a lake where you have a wetland fringe is using a boardwalk. Um, using, you know, you're very limited on how much fill you can use in shore impact zone one, which is the first half that setback. And to be honest, it's like twenty square feet, it's not even a piece of plywood, I mean, it's a very small amount. And so, um, being able to, to, to fill that, um, is not permissible and isn't going to be allowed, so the next best option is to, is to construct a boardwalk. And, um, you know, my recommendation to the city is gonna be a, a maximum of six feet, post and pilings. Um, should be a foot out of, should be typically about a foot above the water, um, so that, cause one of the, one of the downsides of the boardwalks is that they crowd out. And they shade out some of the vegetation underneath there, so if you get a little bit higher up, then you can get some sunlight down into there. Uh, setback of ten feet so that we're not putting it right on the property line. And it cannot be built in such a way that is going to impede on a neighbor's riparian rights and by riparian rights, I mean, if you look at the lot. And as it comes down into the lake, you extend that into the lake. And if, so, uh, and so it's lots due, so what you, what you don't want to have is a boardwalk that's here and go. Goes all that way across your neighbors, you, you, you know, it's, it's basically the rule would be your boardwalk is going to be perpendicular to your property on the lake, period. And I don't think you would have any other issues at all with boardwalks whatsoever. That would make it very simple and easy for, um, staff to be able to issue permit for that. And very easy with the standards in place to be able to go out and do an inspection to verify that it was put in properly.
So correct me if I'm wrong, was there a deadline applied to when staff was supposed to recommend it? Cause I know, I thought it was like a three months.
Three months, correct, so we are ahead of schedule.
Okay. So that seems like the logical place to start, so, okay.
Right.
Did you have any questions? David?
Oh, I think it's a, a great opportunity to, to get things updated for clarity. Um, I too worked in Cross Lake for many years, um, worked on kind of the three sides of the fence. Helping to write ordinances like those for cities. Having to sit at a C time in tonight to review applications. That apply to the current city ordinance. As city staff. And then working as a consultant at a city's ordinance to see how I can best get the project to comply with it for a client. So the more clarity and consistency. There is, the easier it is, I agree, for the staff to, to review applications, the easier it is for. The general public to understand that and prepare an application that's thorough. Um, that meets the ordinance is consistent, so there's value in all of that. Um, particular things that I would mention would be stormwater management plans. And having some real clarity brought to that. Um. Again, most of this is things associated with work within the shoreline zone, shore impact zone. And really getting to some of the specifics that are allowed or will, would be allowed or disallowed. Um, the other thing would be. Uh, pervious and imperious coverage and how that's dealt with and, uh, there's, uh, just a. Real palette of choices out there amongst different communities on how that's handled when it comes to. Do we allow pervious pavement, um, or not? Do we give it a fifty percent credit or a hundred percent credit? Does an engineer have to design it? Does an engineer have to review it? How close can it be to a septic system? All of those things, it, it really can be. Kind of complex unless you have the, the rules laid out for everybody to follow, so. I see a lot of value.
Well, I'm glad that you brought that up and it was nice to see Dave when I walked in, we've worked on projects before, he is a, is an excellent dad on. Working with the city, so I was really glad to see that, just a couple of things, I mean, I'm, you know, trying to get, not get in the weeds, but I'll get in the weeds a little bit since you kind of brought up a couple of things, uh. One of the recommendations that I will, I'm gonna bring forward is that, um. The, if, when the city needs to have a stormwater management plan, then it would meet the standards of the Minnesota Stormwater Manual. And their minimum impact design standards, which means to treat a one point one inch rain event, um, over a twenty four hour period. And that when you do that, that captures about ninety percent of all the nutrients that you're trying to collect, things like phosphorus. And, uh, sediment and all those sort that it collects all that and then the rest of the water doesn't collect. It picks that up in that first one and a half inch, you're not so worried about the next piece then, but you want to be able to do those, make sure that it's designed properly. And David attests to this, that, you know, when you get those a hundred year event, we get a five and a half inch rain, you don't want to have it wash out what you just put in, so it needs to be able to pass. Those larger, you know, cause if you look in the ordinance now, there's part of the ordinance talks about a stormwater plan. And then part of the ordinance talks about a hundred year event and then part of the ordinance says, well, it's kind of the staff, what they think you should do and, you know, it's. I, I really didn't know what the option was to, you know, it felt like you just kind of picked your door and that's what you go with, I mean, you didn't really know what applied to in certain situations and I think that. Makes it challenging, um, I do think we'll have an interesting discussion about the pervious, um. Pervious pavement and pervious pavers, because the county ordinance allows a hundred percent credit for a pervious materials. Um, provided, and that was what, what Dave brought, which is the key is that it's designed by somebody knowledgeable to be able to construct it properly. It's installed by somebody who knows how to put it in properly and then the maintenance, maintenance is the key. Cause, uh, there are lots of pervious materials that go in and they're great for the first year and then, uh, you know, sand and silt and everything, get on top of that, fill in all the. Airspace that's supposed to let the water go through and it becomes pervia- imperious and within twelve months and so, um. People would, people will, I think, want to see that, um, standard. But they will also have to know that there will be, um, some very high standards to meet to be able to utilize that and I did. Uh, have a conversation with some contractors, Bethany last week and, um. They were very much in favor of that with the understanding that they would have to have, you know, be responsible for maintenance and I think part of the ordinance would say that, hey, if you're gonna get a hundred percent credit. For using a pervious material, you're gonna have to have a contract with a maintainer. That show that you're gonna have that maintained and it's gonna have to show and, you know, every year show that to the city, cause. If you look at the different materials, they require different maintenance, so if you look at a, like a, a pervious asphalt or pervious cement, that should be vacuumed every year, that needs to be cleaned every year. But if you use more of a pervious paper, that needs to be done about every seven years, we actually pull the, the aggregate between the spaces and you replace that with new because that eventually fills in again with the sediment. So it, it, it works provided, so like when I was at the county, we had a staff person and then when we got back into the office after New Year's, we had a list. Of all the people who had gotten a permit to have that and they got a letter that says, uh, you know, we need something from you in thirty days to show that you've had yours maintained or, um. You're not gonna be in compliance with the ordinance because they were using that to, you know, standard their imperious standards and stuff, so it really ends up being, um, the task of staff. To follow through and, and make sure that it's following the ordinance and that, so, but, um, it's, it is interesting, people. Want to do it until they find out what they have to do it. You don't have as many take advantage as you would think because of just the extra requirements you need to make sure that it's doing the job it's supposed to do. That'd be a good discussion to have when the time comes.
Right, so, um, he, you are gonna give us the recommendations, we're gonna be going through it, are we gonna be trying to do these, these ordinance changes en masse? Is that kind of the idea and, and at that point, when, uh, we're gonna alert the public so we get some feedback from the public?
Uh, that is definitely something that we would have to talk about, um, once we get the scope of the, you know, revisions that he suggests. Um, and then we can look at it as whether we want to do it that way, if we want to, um, go piece by piece, I'm sure you could help us provide a roadmap if we chose the, the other. Um, just initially, what is your thought right now? That would be the best.
What I would recommend that we do is, um, just focus on getting the, the ordinance for Shoreland Residential. Reorganized and get it set up in the format that, that works, I think that should be step number one, just let's, let's get that part done and then. You know, I've got a parking lot of things that we can use to review and you might say, no, we think that part of the ordinance is great, this part of the ordinance is great, oh yeah, maybe we should check that out or we should maybe look at this. But I think the, you know, the, the real, I think it's, it's really important. To get this part of the ordinance clarified and in a good working order because I think it's the one that gets utilized the most in the city typically for all the activities and, um. Once, I think, once we go through the process and people see that, um, their feedback matters and we get some input. Um, and we see this ordinance come out in a way that makes sense. That will then encourage, I think, other things to happen when people feel like the, that they're part of the process and that they're able to. Not that everything they want goes into the ordinance, but that they was considered and explained why some things are in, why some things might not have been brought in and that, so. So my recommendation would be to, uh, to, let's just focus on the Shore and residential part. Get that reformatted, get that put into place with some performance standards. Um, and get that clarified and then there's, there's even parts within this that I think need to be. Looked at a little bit closer and we could possibly do it this time or it could be, you know, like the use table, there are some things, uh, in the use table that I think are concerning and. Well, I, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but I guess I'll bring it up for you guys, um. As I was looking through the use tables, uh. The adult use, you know, adult uses, so, um, the type of things where, you know, um, strip clubs, those sorts of things, uh. You have to have an ordinance that regulates and you can't prohibit them in your city, you have to put them in, you have to allow them somewhere. Um, but you don't have to allow them where you can, you can, you, you can regulate them in a place that the city wants to, where it would make sense to put those types of uses. Right now, somebody could come in and apply for conditional use permit out on the highway three seventy one district and put adult use out there, like you would see down. Like if you south of Little Falls by St. Cloud, those pure pleasure play, you know. That could be a conditional use, somewhere coming now within that district. Not sure that's the district you want that in.
No, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, that's something that I would recommend gets changed ASAP because, um. That's not, I don't think, would not meet the character and of, of what we have here, what you guys have in this one, so. It's just some of those things like that, that I've picked up on that we just. And the, I think you guys all know when the conditional use permit comes in. It's pretty hard to say no when they meet the requirements, so, um. Just, I, I don't want to bring it up for a whole, but it, it is one of the things that I did see, that I think needs to be, needs to be rectified, I will tell you what we did at the county. You can build any adult use you want with the CUP in the agriculture zone district of the county. So if you want to put a use out in the middle of cornfield. Go for it. We, we made sure that every major road township included had resident, had residential zoning. Of all the, if you look at the county map, you'll see a bunch of brown lines and green lines and yellow lines, those are all major roads within the county. And they're forty deep, so if you want to have that type of use and then the middle part with ag areas, cause that's, we want to keep ag, I mean, especially in the county down south, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of ag uses going on down there. But. I'm not sure, we have, I don't believe the county's had an application yet to try to prevent adult use in the agriculture zone district, so you can put it in a district that. That you want, that makes sense for the right location for the city. Can't prohibit it, but, uh, can definitely regulate it, so I think that's something that we should, um, talk about and. Consider that as, as we go forward, so.
So to get back to Josh's. Question about process, so you'll have a preliminary report, an outline of what, what you suggest we do in the next week, two weeks, three weeks, whatever.
Yep.
Does that go out to us then for some study before the September second meeting and then are we gonna discuss this again in September, is that?
That would be the idea, yeah, as soon as I receive it, I will.
And Chris will be back, you'll be back in September then?
I could if you want me to.
Well, I'm just guessing that that's the way it's gonna go.
Absolutely, we could make arrangements for that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, for sure.
Yep.
Okay.
And just to add. Yeah, and just to add to those performance standards, um, the zoning map for the city of Nispa is unique in the fact that every single zoning district. Is in the shoreline, so every zoning district is subject to the Minnesota shoreline rules. And not, right, so you've got some that are subject to the shoreline rules, some that aren't, you've got some that are riparian and subject to the shoreline rules. Some that are non-riparian, but still subject to those shoreline rules because they meet that one thousand foot, um, buffer. And so it gets very difficult when you go to look into the ordinance and you want to go list by the performance standards. What can I do if I own a lot, it's five hundred feet off the water, it's zoned in shoreline, but it's urban residential. Right, so, or it's, you know, we've got, um, just a bunch of different zoning. Um, areas, and so, um, it gets very. There's no roadmap, none whatsoever, and so those are the things that I would be.
Together a map and and, um. You know, all the lakes and you have this buff around and you put it on the map for this one, so. I mean, there's like a spot in the middle that much, that's not in the shoreline area, some part in the city, and then it's really kind of a, it's it's unique, I would say.
One of the things about us having all this water around here.
It's a beautiful thing, and we want to make sure we keep it that way.
Appreciate.
Glad to help, and, uh, like I said, you know.
I look forward to reading.
And I'll be happy to.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, moving on, old business, we have none, city planners report.
Uh, the city planner report, I don't know if you all had a chance to read through, uh, what was provided in your packet. Um, I would like to get your input and your feedback concerning temporary signs and our fee schedule. There's a few, um, discrepancies, um, I don't know if you've driven through downtown lately, but there seems to be an awful lot of. Uh, temporary sign violations, um, and and an awful lot, and. It would take all day, every day to go around and fix it, and so, um, and upon initial review, um. There is not a temporary sign application. And there is no fee listed in our fee schedule. So that would initially make me think that, okay, the no permits required, you just need to meet ordinance. However, our ordinance specifically states that permits are required for temporary signs. So we don't have an avenue for people to get these temporary signs, and so I find that people are just pretty much doing whatever they want. And our ordinance lacks any ability, um, within this to to regulate it well. So I would like to change some things, but I would like to know what your direction moving forward is, if you would prefer. That we do not require a permit, we do not require a fee. They are all subject to our ordinance regulations, so if a violation occurs, the violation process would, um, you know, begin. Um, we would, you know, much like it's written in the ordinance, we would take their signs, those kinds of things, but no permits would be required. Or we can require a permit, an application can be made, and we can adopt, um, or recommend a fee schedule. And have city council adopt that, or maybe there's something else that I haven't thought of, and you have suggestion for.
Can you provide an example?
An example?
Yeah, of 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 a violation that sticks to your mind that you see right now.
The one I saw this morning.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the lions are selling peaches at the fire hall. Neither a temporary sign permit for their sidewalk sign that is an off premise sign, not an on premise sign. Um, that has not been applied for, nobody's talked to us about that sign, um, so. There's those things, and there's a difference between an onsite sign and an offsite sign, and onsite sign is an allowable sign in all districts. Um, and what you can do is basically you can advertise your business on your property. An offsite sign is when you're advertising your business on somebody else's property. So when they have the sidewalk sign down by the Chamber of Commerce. Not located where they're doing business, that becomes an offsite sign, which our ordinance states are prohibited in all districts other than. The ones that are existing. So that's the billboards we see on three seventy one and those signs.
Where would a garage sale sign fall under if it's put on?
That's a residential sign, so this, basically, um, what's in the city planner report is just referring to commercial signs at this point. Um, mainly the downtown central business district.
So looking at one of your proposed, uh, on section twenty dash forty two, you're. Line one, temporary signs must not interfere with pedestrian traffic or sightlines for vehicular traffic. Pedestrian traffic would constitute a sidewalk here on downtown, correct?
Right.
So right off Main Street there, I've seen plenty just. Turning out through seventy one to come here, sure, so, um. If it's off of the sidewalk. Can't put it on the road. Businesses are more or less butted up to the other edge of that sidewalk, there's really nothing that you could put if you were. An entrepreneur having a sale of some sort on Main Street.
Right, but our ordinance does allow sidewalk signs.
How would we go about advertising this, so the general public is aware of this, because I think that that's going to be. Now we're getting past the bulk of the summer rush, I don't think we're going to have that much signage out there.
Right.
Coming once the leaves start falling, but in order for next year, for sure.
Yeah, this fall and this coming spring would be, I think, the imperative time to get the information out, I find most people don't intend to. Violate any ordinance, I find most people just want to advertise their business and run a successful business, and they're not out there trying to, you know, get one up on. On anybody, and, um, so it's a lack of knowledge, I think if we can get this information out to businesses, but I can't do that until we have. Information that's logical, that's, um, applicable, that is, you know, that I can administer, um. To have an enforcement, so as soon as we have a direction of where we want to go and how we want to proceed with this, um, then I would like to. Um, you know, and I'm open to ideas, we can have a town hall, we can, I can go door to door, I'm fine with that, you know, when things calm down a little bit. I find generally owners aren't in, you leave your information, um, you know, with whoever staff and. We could do mailers, I mean, there's a multitude of different ways that we can get the information out, including involving the chamber.
Is there a? Practical way that? That businesses that are off the. Off the main track, especially in the central business district, I'm talking about you get over towards A and W and that strip back in there and the gathering. And it's on the corner. Um, they're kind of off the the track of people when they're walking up and down Main Street, you know, they, some people look to the right and they don't. I don't know if they see what's there, because I know the 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 business activity drops off dramatically when you get into those areas, and if there's a. A way that the city could get together with the Chamber of Commerce or something and have a. Have some signage that's out on the main street, you know, like in the corner where the Chamber of Office is there. Or more of a directory board, that could be something that can be changed as businesses come and go, you know, nothing permanent, you know, it'd be permanent, but something that's that's.
Maybe like a digital.
Because some of the, some of these people are, you know, they're beating their head against the wall over there.
Yeah, there's an obvious need, right, I don't think anybody's out there just putting signs for fun.
I think that has to be addressed in whatever sign changes ordinances we make here, so.
Yeah, and so, um, Brittany had worked on this project prior. Um, I know that this has been on, um, the topic for quite a while, and it's been a concern for a lot of people, I did walk down to the chamber. Um, talked with Pam and we walked outside, um, it would be my recommendation that two signs go up, one on the south side of the chamber building, one on the north side. Uh, the one on the north side would advertise all of those off-street or off-main-street businesses such as the, um. Uh, the bike rental right here, it would advertise, um, the the, uh, American Legion. Um, it would advertise the hardware store, Lake Latitude, and all of those that are off that. The one south would be the Moxie, the A and W, the Fund Sisters, uh, Wind Down and those. So I think if we could identify which signs or which businesses and which areas would, um. Be able to advertise on those signs, because it would be nice to leave those dedicated just for those businesses that are off.
It's very gratifying to know that, you know, you're you're working on this.
Yes.
You know, and it's not just something that we're throwing out here, so it's.
Yep, it is definitely being worked on, we're planning it, um, we've been in our budget now for a while, and so we're working towards making those steps to. Make it a reality, and I know people have been waiting, they hear a lot, yep, we're working on it, so I know that.
I go into the stars and I catch it once in a while, so, you know, you gotta lend an ear, so.
So I think we would have favorable, um. Response from the public.
Thank you.
Ultimately, I think the the root of the problem could be too, is that some of these businesses want to advertise to certain areas of town to pull them in. Well, our general parking is off of Main Street, so. In the future, if we get to a solution of having a parking facility somewhere within our downtown district. That would also be a great spot to advertise. For all downtown, not just this one specific region, so.
That's a great idea.
Definitely trying to think outside of the box to present a solution for that, and Jenny and I have talked about a few things.
The baseball field.
You can tell the parents of that one.
So what kind of specific feedback are you looking for? I know, like, you were talking about a fee schedule, I would. Prefer not to have a fee schedule to have, oh, you need a a permit to put up a temporary sign, I just think that's a little antiquated in my opinion, but.
There's a lot to be said to just going without a permit, it's a lot of paperwork, it's copying, it's scanning, it's doing this, it's making sure people have their permits. Um, enforcing it in and of itself will be a full-time job, whether they have permits or not. I think if they know that they can do certain things here, the parameters, no permits necessary, this is what you're allowed based on the usage and based on this table. I I would be in favor of that, more so than requiring permits, um, but that would then require an ordinance change.
The only other recommendation I would give is on number six, uh, remove it within thirty days of sale or rental. I mean, we have a pretty limited window in which a lot of vendors are coming into town to sell something, maybe, maybe shrink that up a bit to like two weeks or something. The the peach sale will be over on XYZ date.
Yep.
If it stays out there for thirty days, that's pretty dated.
Right.
So if you get my logic on that, otherwise I have no other feedback, I think it's good.
So based on your recommendation for how I would move forward, I'd be happy to prepare something that would go to, um. Um, the next, or you could review at the next planning commission meeting to then go to the city council for approval.
Yep.
I think we're in the, you're in the right, we're on the right track here all the way around.
Okay.
And then we'll find some land for a new parking.
That would be great, Jesse, if you've got any ideas, I'm all ears.
There are, there are some ideas, but.
All right, so just to to reiterate, um, you're all in favor of going down the no permit route and proposing the ordinance change to allow for no permits that are required.
Yes.
Okay.
On our code.
Next item is a planning commission vacancies.
We've had interest, um, I've sent links to our application online to two individuals, but we've received no applications as of right now. So we're still working on trying to fill those vacancies. Uh, permits have gone down quite a bit, so, um, I think things are slowing down, but then they pick up a little bit, so we'll see how it equals out over the summer.
Any additional questions, comments?
No.
None.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second all those in favor.
I.
I, all is opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.